Ready? Okay.
All right, it's 6:00 and I would like to start this meeting and the work session this evening. If you are going to use your mic, you need to get close to it to project. So first item on our agenda is the classification and compensation system updates. Laura Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back, everybody. It's strange and we've been practicing this, so we will probably have a few kinks. We need to continue to work through this evening, but we will do our best to do that. The audio and camera upgrades to the conference center are going to help that tremendously. So it's nice to be able to have this for us and then to offer to our patrons going forward. So as the Mayor mentioned, our first evening item this evening is kind of a follow-up to a March 24th work session where we were talking about some work that had been done both by the Austin Peters Group and looking at a refresh of our classification and compensation system that was last kind of comprehensively overhauled in 2017, as well as some discussions or recommendations related to additional position classifications resulting from changes in job responsibilities over the last couple of years and/or structural changes that department directors, particularly in the case of our Public Works Director, as we've had new directors come in and have an opportunity to evaluate the operations and the functions and goals and objectives of the department that we presented. There were several questions and I think important discussion at that work session and then several follow-up questions that we wanted to come back with you this evening. And then also Chief Madden presented his kind of proposed restructuring within the Police Department just based on his analysis and objectives and trying to meet a number of goals. What was included in this work session packet? We didn't go back and touch on all of the positions that we presented at that March 24th work session, primarily because where we didn't have questions around those positions, we're going to move forward with the assumption that you all are comfortable with those and that we'll bring the rest of these positions along. Again, we still have work to do once we get through this second piece of the conversation to come back with a full implementation proposal, which is what we did in 2017. So we set the structure and then we'll come back, particularly as we move through the budget process, and share those dollar amounts and that specific implementation plan and schedule with you. So really, again, we re-engaged Austin Peters Group. Best practices suggest that you should kind of take this more comprehensive look at your classification and compensation system every three to five years. We implemented some fairly significant impacts back in 2017 and at that same time adopted a philosophy that we were going to try to compete in terms of where we set our salary structure or salary ranges at about 60% of the market here in the Kansas City metropolitan area. One of the discussion points that I felt like we had clarity, or at least general consensus around at the March work session was support to try to continue to keep us at that 60th percentile. Again, obviously, looking at overall dollar impacts, but we did highlight in your work session materials for this evening that Austin Peters Group, when they costed out a move to the 40th percentile or the 50th percentile, it was about a $60,000 impact to base wages impacting about 60% of our staff. And a move to the 60th percentile would have an impact to base wages of about $110,000 impacting about 67% of our staff. Similar to the 2017 study and any study that we're going to do going forward, an update to your classification and compensation structure doesn't result in a pay increase for every single employee. It's really looking at where they are from a market perspective, as well as do have we advanced them? Are we advancing them through their salary ranges in accordance with their tenure with the organization and experience? So this evening, I just wanted to touch on, try to answer some of the questions that we heard at that March 24th work session and then I've had some follow-up conversations, trying to make sure I had a clear understanding of those questions so that we could try to answer those as completely as we could this evening. One of those related to a title change for, from Assistant City Administrator, Finance Director to Deputy City Administrator. The title change sort of more accurately reflects increased responsibilities. So taking on of what had historically been a Community Development Director's position as well as finance and that Assistant City Administrator. But it was a, it is a title change only maintaining the current salary range at a grade 31. We did include a redlined version of that in the packet and I apologize. I was sending Audrey documents for my nephew's graduation on Friday and I sent the wrong document in the original packet, but it was updated last night. So the only difference there was I'd missed the one with the title and the salary range. So in terms of the job responsibilities, those were more, those were consistent with what was in the packet on Friday. So what we tried to do was just create a little bit more clarity sooner in the job description about particularly which departments, both this position and the proposed reclassification to an Assistant City Administrator's position would maintain in terms of functions and/or other departments that they had oversight and responsibility for. Again, as we've made hires in the last couple of years, some of the responsibilities that had previously been with a Community Development Director in terms of particularly serving on some of the MARK committees and some other things like that have transitioned from this position to the Public Works Director's position. There's still a lot of overlap. We have a lot of folks throughout our organization that continue to be involved and connected to particularly that regional work that's being done. So those lines aren't always clear, but primarily the responsibility for things like cars and SMAC and STP land there. And then previously, that position had had the oversight responsibility for the Human Resources Function and the Worker City Safety Program. Now, the position still does serve in an advisory capacity or as a trustee on our work, on the CARAT Workers Compensation Board and works on presenting and preparing cost estimates, payroll cost estimates that are submitted, that our premiums are based on. But in terms of administration of the Safety Program, which has been revamped and revived and overseeing workers' compensation claims and employees who've experienced anything and are dealing with providers, that has transitioned away from this position. So I didn't know if there were any other additional questions around the recommendation on this position. Nope, turn it on so you can see the red. There you go. Get a little bit closer and then...
There we go. Can you hear me? Why can't it be louder? Can you hear me? Okay, so I guess the difference from, I mean, the, what we have in the information we have tonight is, is that some of the tasks from this position over, were taken over by Public Works Director. Is that correct? Is that the only overflow that we've saw? That, and maybe I missed it, but I just know that, because I had asked where the overflow...
I think so. I mean, I think the exercise of, and I know that was one of the questions specifically, as people take on additional responsibilities, what that had previously been on their plate, you know, remains on their plate or gets passed down to a different position in the organization. And I think you had expressed some, you know, concern or wanting to make sure that we were making sure that if we were looking at compensation increases or reclassifications that we accounted, you know, for those. And I think that, I think that they have. I think what we've done in many cases is there were a lot of things lumped in positions, particularly based on kind of some of the position responsibilities and things back in 2017 when we did these original, had these original conversations and developed this set of job descriptions. So I think in this case, you see that movement away from, the movement away from the oversight of human resources, for example, which is probably the bigger area of responsibility than serving on the various committee, regional committees. And that being shifted to the current Assistant to the City Administrator's position. But there was also a much more deliberate and specific taking on of Community Development Director responsibilities. So you may recall until we hired the City Planner's position, this position was, you know, presenting and preparing and developing staff reports and reviewing projects. And some of that work has shifted and those responsibilities were shifted accordingly. But the position continues to attend all of the Planning Commission meetings and be, you know, much more intricately involved with our redevelopment and development projects that are occurring. So that was the biggest area of responsibility that came off and the HR area, or came on and the HR function came off.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So then moving to the recommendation to reclassify the Assistant to the City Administrator to an Assistant City Administrator's position. Again, historically, that position had been, we created a Public Information Officer's position, I believe, back in 2013 or 2014. And then that, I believe in 2017, transitioned to the Assistant to the City Administrator's title, took on some additional responsibility, retained the responsibilities of the Public Information Officer as well. And with this transition, I think when you look at the redlining of that job description, there are, again, responsibilities that are taken on and no responsibilities from that job description that were, that were currently removed. In the supplemental memo that we provided or that was sent out last night, one of the things that we talked about, and I think I mentioned, and I had a request to kind of outline this, is we have, you know, our organizational structure for the city has been relatively fluid in the time that I've been here. And that has allowed us, when you, when you think about the fact that we have only had a City Administrator's position since 2002, in the lifetime of our city and our organization, many of these kind of structural pieces and moving parts and department functions have changed and continue to change over time. You know, when we look at, in the community development area, for example, we've outsourced, you know, we had previously outsourced building inspections with the county. And we did that in part because we felt like we weren't seeing enough activity to keep a full-time person, you know, busy. And then the county moved away from providing that service. We did that through a third-party vendor for a couple of years and documented and were able to come back and make the budget request and justify based on the workload and history of that workload that we felt like we could support that full-time position. So what we really try to do is look at how to, and it's a balancing act. How do we main flex, maintain flexibility and the ability to respond to sort of changing circumstances in our community, whether that be on the development front or whether that be on code enforcement, finance? I mean, 16 years ago, we didn't have any TIF and CID agreements that we were tracking and making distributions and negotiating redevelopment agreements. I think there's a lot of, a lot of things that have come on in terms of sophisticated projects and things that we're handling. So the challenge is, you know, trying to create the position descriptions that are flexible enough, that people understand that there will be times that they'll be working outside of their job description. But we try to get that, you know, correct the majority of the time. And then when we see really sort of longer-term shifts in responsibilities and/or council priorities or community priorities, we have the opportunity to then be able to react and respond with reclassifications. But if I go back 10 years ago and look at, and there was a chart in, in the supplemental memo that talked about leadership team positions or department director positions. So in 2011, those positions which were classified as department director-level positions, which meant certain compensation structure and/or their slightly different benefit package that's available to department directors. We had a total of eight people in those roles. Today, we're sitting with six people in those roles. And there are some days we wish we had eight back. But I think, again, looking at and continuing to evaluate, you know, where do we have? And then trying to bring forward proposals when we, when we make a hire, whether that's a building inspector or a planner, trying to create that support network underneath the department head-level positions to a certain extent. So stop there. I know that the recommendation in terms of the salary, the grade difference with a sixth-grade bump, that's not something that you, that we see very often, but we feel like it aligns with the change in responsibilities that really has occurred incrementally over the last couple of years. So happy to stop there and answer any questions.
Yeah, I talked to Emily just briefly about this. It looks like in the description that you had the summary of that position, you indicated that there was also support of the racial equity work. But when I looked at the job description itself, unless it's, it's within the concept of HR, it's really not explicit. So I didn't know if diversity and inclusion is something that should be added to that as a part of the HR function or what.
Well, I think we haven't added it, but we haven't added it to any position. And I would contend that as we move into the pilot project that we're about to embark on with UCS and as we identify kind of a menu of options and things that we want to work on, I would like to see us, and again, we haven't talked about this as a group, but one of my goals would be to see how do we promote and communicate the importance of diversity and inclusion in all of our job descriptions? So it would be a more wholesale, you know, I mean, really top to bottom. Because it's not just, you know, the Assistant City Administrator's position or the City Administrator's position or the Police Chief's position. So I think that, to me, is a task and a goal that we would go back and do that rather than specifically identify it at this point in that position. So I think we cataloged that under kind of the HR work that, that is happening.
Thank you.
Laura, with the change from 23 to 29, I noticed that there wasn't a change in required education or experience to potentially match that, that change. And I'm wondering the thought with that.
Well, I'll give you the honest answer to that. We'll go back and look at that. I think it's consistent with, I need to double-check against all of the rest of the department director positions, but I believe that that is our structure. So that the, the thing we may want to look at tweaking is relevant years of experience. But consistently throughout the organization, we, the requirements are that bachelor's degree or with, or the equivalent combination of education and experience. That's, you know, always been very important for us to maintain. Because as we, you know, we see people develop, you know, from within the organization that may not have come to us with that degree, for example. So we can go back and look at that and see if it's appropriate to make that change. It may not be for an organization our size in this position. But the other thing that's a little bit unique about just kind of the conversation that we're having, and, you know, I appreciate the questions. This is very atypical for us to sit down and work through job descriptions as a council. So I think there are, you know, and looking at, when you adopted the Austin Peters Group study in 2017, all of the proposed job descriptions were included in that, in that report. And we had an opportunity to go through those. And so just in trying to respond to and answer the questions, we haven't caught everything yet. And so, you know, if we've got the big pieces of that, we can go back and as we move toward final implementation, make sure that we've, we've captured some of, you know, some of those pieces and those concerns and making sure that we've got the education and training shown, you know, appropriately or consistent with. I would say it needs to be consistent with what the other department director positions would show at this point.
Thanks.
Anything else on that position? Okay.
I do, I have one more. Can you hear me? Hello? So the difference in the pay grades from the 21 to, or what am I looking at? 31 here. It tops out at 135.5 and then where she is currently, it tops out at 132.3. Am I not reading that right? That's not that much of a difference.
There isn't that much of a difference. Well, I put the new...
Because I see it goes...
So she's not moving to, so the Deputy City Administrator, which is where the Assistant City Administrator. So right now, our structure is effectively, in terms of our salary grades, when you look at our overall structure, City Administrator, grade 33, Police Chief, and currently the Assistant to the City Administrator, Finance Director, grade 31. And then the balance of the department directors, so Public Works Director, Parks and Recreation Director, 29. And so this would not be moving, and that was part of our conversation. We're not, we're not recommending to move that. So we're creating sort of that separation with the title, with Deputy City Administrator. The separation exists already in the salary grade structure. And then this one would move from 23 to 29 to be consistent with the other department director-level positions.
Okay. All right, I misunderstood that. Thank you.
And again, part of that is we haven't moved, we haven't moved our salary ranges since 2017 when we implemented those initial recommendations. And salary range movement overall will be part of this when we bring back a specific implementation plan. And so, and so part of the benefit for employees who may not be receiving an immediate financial, you know, benefit or increase as a result of the Classification Compensation Study recommendations, have that opportunity for more future growth within that salary range. So when the top end of the range moves, because we do have positions currently, I think we're at five in the organization. We have five positions that are currently topped out. So that's one of the other factors that we look at is as we have people, longer-tenured employees in the positions, we have people that are topping out at, you know, at the salary ranges. So part of why you want to keep your salary ranges moving periodically over time so that incentivizes the employees to move through and continue to, you know, look at the pay-for-performance system that we have to continue to move through that salary range.
Can you remind me what the current range for the, for the level 21 is?
For the what?
For the level 21, what the current range is? I was looking for it, but I don't...
I didn't...
My main objective is, I mean, we're going six, we're going six grades. And I know that when we bombard any, anybody in staff, you know, that just rolls downhill. And I want to make sure that we've really looked into anyone else that's taken on responsibility. It's just a large amount and I, yeah, I want to look at it.
It is. I think, I think the concern was that with the sixth-grade jump, that there will, there is or there will be some level of responsibility or job function that rolls down into other positions in the organization and making sure that we've looked at that. I mean, I sat down with, and I didn't include it all in the packet, but we've looked at the Payroll and Benefit Specialist position. There's nothing that moved off of the current Assistant to the City Administrator's list that has been shifted. So we've taken a look at that. I think it's a little bit of a different story and I think that was probably more clearly illustrated. There's more shifting of responsibilities with the recommended reclassifications in Public Works. But again, we're tying those to, as those responsibilities shift, we're tying, you know, the reclassification. So rather than shifting, you know, Assistant Public Works or Public Works Superintendent responsibilities to a crew leader at this point, it's appropriate for us to recognize that and create the Assistant Public Works Superintendent's position. So we have evaluated that and will continue to, you know, obviously look at that. But same, same thing, we've looked at, you know, with really all of these. I mean, we have gone through and, I mean, very sensitive. If I could pull it up for us, maybe?
Thank you.
No, I just have a comment. I think we're getting into micro-managing here. I think that this is a fair movement of positions and enriching positions, making decisions on, on the ability to grow within, within the structure. I'm just very concerned that we're spending a lot of time on this
I agree.
that doesn't need to be spent.
I just want to include...
And I'm also, would like to ask that those that are speaking speak really close to the mic because I'm not hearing very well.
I agree. I think this is well-deserved and I think it's long overdue. But I just want to make sure that while we're making this large jump, we are also including anyone else that's affected by it. It's a lot of money and it's a lot of, it's a large decision. And I think that we all understand what teamwork looks like and I know that we've got a great team. I just want to make sure that we include everyone that supports that role.
Okay. Any other questions on those? We'll move on to the Police Department restructuring. So as I mentioned, Chief Madden presented kind of his proposed restructuring in the supplemental packet that we provided the current organization. One of the questions we had was how does this structure compare to the current kind of rank structure or command structure within the department? So we included a current org chart that, that shows where we sit today in your packet, as well as we included the org chart that Chief Madden presented in March. The only modifications that we made to that org chart, which is the, the green org chart, was to add some titles. So we were clear in terms of the functional areas. So the functional areas, and I think, I think we tried to be clear about that, but as we move this forward publicly, the functional areas within the Police Department, Patrol Investigations and Support Services would remain the same. So we've added some titles there. And then I know there were some questions about the Internal Affairs function and responsibility and, and reporting relationships to make sure that that position had that direct access in dealing with any internal affairs complaints to the Chief of Police. And so you'll see there, although Dan and I both need probably remedial training in designing org charts, but we, what we try to reflect and we will clean up is that that responsibility rests with the Lieutenant in the Investigations area. And that's, but, but for the Internal Affairs, that dotted line goes directly to the Chief. That, that does not flow up specifically through, through the major to get to the Chief. We wanted to make sure that we illustrated that more clearly. So appreciated those questions. Again, in the supplemental packet, we wanted to include, so kind of what's the current structure? What's the proposed structure? The biggest question that we had at the March work session was, can you help us understand if the new structure would be more expensive, less expensive, similar in cost to the current structure that we have? So with respect to just the structure overall, from a command staff perspective, you know, today, we have a chief, we have three captains, we have five sergeants, we have three corporals, a detective, a rotating detective's position, which is, has historically been a police officer that's, that's coming into investigations. And then your, our police officer, one in two positions. With the chief's proposed new structure, we would move to have one less position within that command structure. So you would have, instead of, as you see on your chart, you would have the chief, a major, one captain over patrol. And then the creation of the Lieutenant's position, which, as I think he referenced in our previous work session... he really believes will provide greater opportunities for succession planning, for skillset development, for kind of building that expertise in a broader band across the organization. And then you have, so you have three or four lieutenants and four sergeants positions. So that, that number, the transition from corporal to, and sergeants currently, which is a total of eight, would, would still remain in the lieutenant and sergeant structure, a total of eight. And then, and then the detectives' positions. And so one of the things is I thought it would be easier to cost, cost this out more specifically for you. But one of the challenges we have is as we think about promotional processes, we don't know who is going to apply necessarily for those promotions. And when you have a small organization like ours in particular, and if you have a police officer, for example, who is longer tenured, but is in a police officer, one or two position, they may currently be making more than an existing corporal or sergeant. And so it's not a clean and clear progression even today. And, and so, you know, we, it became increasingly difficult to really look at that and say, how can I give you, you know, a total dollar amount? I think if we look long-term with a reduction in command staff positions of one, there would be savings realized in that position. Initial implementation is going to be dictated somewhat by who applies and how we manage that. But the chief and I have gone back and reviewed. I think if I understood kind of the question or the, the direction that we'd like to see is we didn't want it to be any more expensive than what the Austin Peters group study was, was recommending in terms of that compression or reclassification. And I think as we've gone back and reevaluated that, we feel comfortable that we can accomplish a transition to the new structure within that same dollar amount, which was approximately $55,000.
Solly has a question.
No, I just had a comment related to that because that cost question was my question last time. So thanks for addressing that. And that makes sense, you know, talking about the combination of the salary range with the tenure that, you know, there could be, there'll be a range presumably for these new lieutenant positions. We won't know exactly, you know, who with what years of experience will apply. So I understand there needing to be some flexibility, but yeah, good to hear. It's generally online and I appreciate the chief's, you know, kind of cost savings eye overall. I think that's great.
And that's really all I have on this item unless anybody has any other questions that we haven't answered or that result from the conversation this evening.
I just want to thank you for your due diligence on.
Yeah, you're welcome. I mean, I think I've been doing this long enough to tell you that there is no perfect classification and compensation system. And any and every decision that we make will make some people happy and will frustrate others. And so it is continually a balancing act. You know, I hope that you all trust that, you know, whether it's me or our department directors, that we're invested in the, the staff that we have and the employees that work, you know, for this city. And, and understand the importance of, of balancing that fiduciary responsibility to our residents along with a responsibility to develop and compensate our employees appropriately. So it's not a perfect system. I wish it was. If I could invent that, I would have retired a lot of years ago. Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to street sales tax renewal discussion. Okay. So similar to the classification and compensation item that was presented in March, back in February, we had a fairly detailed work session on plans to renew our street sales tax. We focused really on kind of developing the action steps and a preferred timeline at that point for renewal. And wanted to recap that this evening. Just touch base again, make sure that around some of the general points that we, we understand the consensus. And then we are planning to come back for a final work session on the 26th of May so that we can really be clear and move forward because the ballot language would be placed on the June 2nd committee agendas then. So, you know, we spent, we spent quite a bit of time in February, just looking at the history of how we got the existing quarter cent sales tax. We looked at revenues generated. We looked at sales tax capacity that remained for the city of Mission and we looked at how our existing sales tax rate compared with our neighbors and neighboring cities in Johnson County. I think that we recapped some of that in the materials that were provided for you this evening. Excuse me, this evening. But if we look at kind of targeted funds between the sales tax and the mills that are dedicated to street maintenance and our gas tax funds that are distributed through the state of Kansas, we're generating just shy of $2 million annually that we can dedicate to our street program. As we looked at the revamping and revising of the residential street program, we were kind of trying to hit that target of what could we do if we had about $2 million that we were able to dedicate to streets each year? Again, we do have capacity within our, our sales tax, but when, and I included some information again in this packet on the comparison of Mission to some other communities. And you'll see that we're, we sit at the top end or the higher end of cities from a tax, sales tax rate perspective in, in Johnson County. So that's certainly an important consideration as we look at this. We did make the decision back in February to proceed with a mail ballot election on the 21st of September. And that has all now been confirmed and set up and coordinated with the election commission. You'll recall there were some really sort of tight windows that we discussed having to navigate. When we had our work session previously about opportunities for us to get that, that on a ballot. But we are confirmed for that date, which allows us plenty of time that, to then have the election results certified and to communicate that to the states. So there would be no lapse potentially in the existing sales tax. We talked about the pros and cons of renewing a, the sales tax as a dedicated street sales tax versus a more general capital improvement sales tax, particularly in light of what the cities of Miriam and Roland Park recently passed or renewed, as well as knowing that we have our parks and recreation sales tax that will sunset in 2023. So our takeaway from a staff perspective was that the council felt as if keeping them separate was an important priority. Because for several reasons, transparency, I think the ability to kind of show those dedicated revenue streams, but also feeling like perhaps we weren't far enough along in the development of conceptual plans for our outdoor park system, that we would be able to communicate that effectively in an informational or educational campaign from the park standpoint. So that was our takeaway. Keep, keep them separate, move forward with a street sales tax. Again, that's going to be a key, you know, critical distinction that we'll want to make sure that we, we finalize as we create the ballot language. And then we really looked at, and I think had conversation back in February around a desire to renew at the existing quarter cent rate or to consider the option of, and the appetite for moving to a three eighths of a cent. Obviously you see about a $300,000 a year difference, at least in today's dollars of revenue generated. And so I know that we, we heard some conversation about a willingness to consider that, but certainly that will be, from my perspective, the focus of our work session next week is to really look at, we have to make that decision about what, what's that rate? So tonight, if there's additional, as you've had time to kind of think about this since February, if there's additional feedback or guidance that you can give us either for next week's work session or for the committee meeting on June 2nd, please, please do that. It will help, help us make, do a better job of putting those materials together for the, for those continued discussions. The other thing that I've had some question around and we didn't address in, in these materials, and I think will be a little bit challenging to address is how, can you show us with the various revenue streams, how we might be able to package residential street programs or package projects in a debt issue to accelerate some of those kinds of things? And we'll be working with Bruce Kimmel this week to try, try to at least lay out some general examples of that. One of the things that we'll want to consider and remember, and I think, and we'll be able to show as we get into next week's work session, where we are in terms of our statutory debt capacity. From a street perspective, all of our street debt retires in 2022. So we're done with street debt because we issued it to coincide with the life of the existing quarter cent sales tax. So, and then I know that there, I also had some questions about how would potential street debt that we might consider take, taking on align with our conversations around issuing debt on our facility conservation improvement programs? So we're actually, our, our goal is to bring both of those to you next week in the work session so that we have an opportunity to kind of see and understand how those may work together. And, and the last point I would make on that is what we know, we ha-, we know that in the cars projects that were adopted over the next five years, there are two projects that we cannot cash flow. The first being the second phase of the Fox Ridge improvements. And the second being the Johnson Drive improvements from Lamar to Metcalf. Now, the Fox Ridge improvements, we've known since that project's inception that somewhere, you know, in the neighborhood of $5 million, that's just not within our wheelhouse to, to cash flow in, in one particular year. There, the only dollars coming in, outside dollars that are coming in to support that will be the cars program dollars. So we can pretty clearly identify, you know, what that debt, debt issue might look like. The Johnson Drive debt issue is a little more complicated simply because we still don't, there's still other, a significant amount of other people's money that's at play in this, whether that is a contribution through the SMAC program or STP funding that is administered through the Mid America Regional Council. So that's about a, where's Celia? 12 million? 10 million? So comparable to the, you know, the reconstruction of Johnson Drive that was completed in 2014, you know, you're looking at a, at a 10 plus million dollar project. And so again, we know we have those cash flow issues on the car side. So what our hope is next week, we'll try to illustrate potentially how we would manage that. And then I think we can start to layer over what does that look like or what capacity might you have if you wanted to bundle parts of the residential street program to accelerate that and get, you know, get more work done in some fashion. And so part of that will also, we have to be sensitive to timing of that with respect to, to construction because we can't issue the debt and hold the, hold the debt as a city without being subject to arbitrage. They don't like for us to borrow money and then potentially earn money on it, which in today's interest rate environment isn't, doesn't always happen. But that, there's a, there's some pieces of that that we'll kind of walk through to help paint that picture, but it won't be a perfect picture by the time we need to make a decision about renewal of the sales tax. But I think it will hopefully give you some additional context. And then really, once we get through the September election and have a sales tax renewed, we can, you know, really put pencil to paper, knowing we've got that, you know, renewed revenue stream. And, and what, what can we do? So I'll stop there. Other questions, thoughts either this evening or since last, the last work session?
Yeah, Laura, I just had one question for next week, next week's follow-up work session. Could we have the numbers based on the updated property valuations of what one mill is equivalent to? Just so we can get a sense of, you know, the difference between the 600,000 and 900,000 in a sales tax rate versus what that would mean in a mill equivalent?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had a question too on that for next week. I would want to see if we could have a little bit of a discussion about the dark store theory and how an unfavorable ruling might affect our balances going forward. And if there's any sort of update on that front, that would be helpful.
Can you talk a little bit about the 1% that's dedicated to general fund in the current sales tax?
Do you?
Well, a 9.6 right now percent includes 1%.
1% that's right.
It's general fund. Is that fixed? Is that something that has been? Is that just ongoing? Or is that something that can be reduced in order to increase the street component?
You, I believe have flexibility. You can, can levy up to that 1%. So you could reduce it. The other thing that we'll be looking at both next week and then on June 2nd are the preliminary budget figures. I mean, I, I think the danger of that is how reliant the, you know, the other general fund operations have become on, you know, on that, on that sales tax to support police and public works and parks and recreation and all those kinds of things, but.
Well, just, it seems to me that if we're looking at a mail levy to do streets versus allocating 1%, there was some percentage of the general fund to dedicated to the streets. I know that in 2023, we're talking about the parks. You know, going back for another percentage of parks.
Renewal of that, right.
Were we going to reverse the order? Or were we going to have this go to possibly three eighths of a cent?
I mean, I think that's, that's really one of the fundamental questions from my perspective is do we flip them? So is, do we want to move forward with this decision based on the needs that we've identified or the priorities that we've established? Or is the primary driver maintaining the same, you know, the same sales tax rate? It, it would be difficult. I mean, from my perspective initially, and we'll elaborate on it more next week. I think that three eight, moving to the three eighths of a cent, if we, if we have that appetite, at least in the short term, allows us, we, we know we have the needs from, from the streets and we know that what we won't have before you have to vote on the ballot question is the results back from the direction finder survey. That's about ready to go out the door, but you won't have all of that back. You'll have that back before you make final budget decisions. So relative to setting your mill rate, what I would probably say is if there's an appetite to, you know, trying to make some trade-offs, there's nothing that says you can't dedicate some of that existing 1% sales tax in, that's allocated to the general fund currently to parks or streets or anything else that you want. So you have the flexibility. I would caution us against taking that, you know, taking that away. But I think there's certainly some flexibility. You could also take more mills than seven. I mean, the magic to seven mills was that at the time that you made that decision, it generated the amount equivalent to what the transportation utility fee was generating. Right? So that's, that's certainly something that we could revisit. Is there a, a different dollar amount? You know, we're far enough away from that. Is that the appropriate amount? If we, if we want to use existing mill levy for streets, what is that appropriate amount? And so I don't, again, I, I don't want us to think there's magic necessarily to the seven. And we've got to understand the history of kind of where that came from.
I just have one general comment of, about tonight's work session. Outside of the reservations that I had, I feel like I didn't hear any feedback or request for follow-up information. So I was wondering if it would be possible to move forward with the classification and compensation system update during our council. So I was wondering if it would be possible to move forward with the classification and compensation system update during our council meeting?
I.
For that.
So I think, so let me ask this. Dan, I'm not sure her microphone is working. Let's trade it out just really quickly because I know even when she's closer, it's difficult to hear. So see about that one. So I think if I understood, RC, the question was, if there aren't reservations, if we're comfortable with sort of the recommendations on classification and compensation, can the council give us the go-ahead?
Correct.
To start formally moving forward to incorporate those into the recommendation that we're going to bring back on a full-fledged implementation?
Correct.
And then, so twofold, I think that the more critical one from my perspective, and I think the chief would agree with me, is if we can get the structure set in the Police Department, he can really start to focus on those promotional processes and get those moving. So certainly the mayor's prerogative, but I think that direction could be provided in the council meeting.
I would say we have created a plan of action. If there's any objection to moving it up, I would say we wait. But if there's unanimous decision to move on that piece, I'm fine. So, does anybody object to moving the comp study up to the council meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other thoughts, comments, questions, information you would like to see next week as we talk again about street sales tax renewal? Nope.
I just wanted to remind everyone that I'm not going to be here. I may be able to get online, but I'm not certain. And so I just want to make sure that our total tax, sales tax, keep it to some degree the same overall, but maybe a portion. So the question is, are we going to do a three eighths cent? Sales tax, which is going to increase our overall sales tax by?
A quarter of a percent.
A quarter of a percent. But then I would like to see either us commit to drop, drop that back in 2023 or find some way to reallocate general sales tax to that and increase maybe the mill or change the overall mill that's dedicated to streets. Because no matter what the finder survey says to us, I think it's been consistent that streets have been an issue for a long time and residential streets specifically. And I think we really need to dedicate some funds to that.
That's all I have. It just feels strange to be standing here instead of, feels good, but strange.
All right then. If there's nothing else, then we will conclude this meeting and start our council meeting at 7:00. Are we putting the classification and comp system update on new business? Okay. All right. Then we are. All right. We are adjourned until 7:00.